Spencer, did you get my response today?
Yeah, and it gave you a response.
Okay, I have a list down.
I should have.
After looking at it.
No, I'm actually not.
You're going to go with this one.
Perfect, thanks.
Conduct business as usual, but don't spend any money.
Is it paper?
Are you going to?
Yeah, Thursday.
Like a big letter paper which.
I'm going to get the email on that.
Which comes from, we have a port now, eight blocks from me. That's what the talent.
Yeah, we'll be able to alert some vendors. If you let me know by tomorrow, they'll be great.
And like literally there's a port.
It's six to eight o'clock.
Forty seconds into Portnoy, quarter mile high, half mile high, I was sitting there making a paper.
I know it'd become very difficult.
I know, it does.
It's hard to take this order in mind. I wanted to go. But, you know, it's just too much stress about it to do that. So, I will try to make it happen next year.
Have you got to be more than that?
I haven't gone yet.
You went last year, right? I think they're doing a pretty good job up there.
Yeah, it's nice. It's neat watching them.
I am too.
I really liked that. Yeah, it was just telling me.
You're going to go?
That's it. Anything else, stay tight. Don't get the good cheese. I'm ready. I'm ready.
What would they for you, Eddie Pluses or?
Thanks, everybody, for coming to April 28th, 2025 Crestwell Council Meeting. If you all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. Council Morse has an excused absence. She won't be here tonight. That'll put us towards the committee reports. And first up is Counselor Kent, Public Safety.
First of two very brief committee reports. We did meet last Tuesday for a public safety committee. Things are going along well. We're getting ready. Spencer's put together, you know, gone and viewed various things. We're going to order a few more promotional things to give out there, but not a heck of a lot. And we're just following up with various people who are going to be coming. And there'll be a lot of the same people as last year. There is one disappointment, you know, we switch on and off with the negotiator. And this year, it's Anita's year, so they won't be there. But otherwise, we're hoping to have pretty much everybody from last time and maybe some new folk as well. And we're going to meet one more time before the event in the middle of June, just to check and make sure things are going, things are going to be ready. And then we should be ready for the event itself when it comes the first Tuesday in August.
That it?
That's it.
Awesome. Is the rook coming?
I don't think the rook is coming this year.
Dang it. I think that was not going to happen this year.
Well, we got last year, so I guess we're going to take it.
Maybe they have to float it around a little bit.
We're going to have either a fire truck or an ambulance. And Counselor Kramer had the fantastic idea of a fire extinguisher demonstration.
Oh, very cool.
Hopefully, we can get that set up. We'll see.
Keep everybody cool, too. Make it rain for the day real quick.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, like it. Excellent. That's Parks and Tree Advisory Board. Spencer?
Yeah, just the big thing was Arbor Day, which was this past Saturday. And had a number of folks out. The weather cooperated, didn't rain, was cool. But the mayor presented the proclamation during the Arbor Day festivities. And turnout was less than last year, from what I understand. But there was still a pretty good turnout, so.
I thought so. There was a lot more cars there than I anticipated. Good to know. That it?
That's it.
Excellent. Airport Commission.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Airport Commission met April 16th. And just a few updates on the happenings out there on some projects. The security cameras are up and working well. And they're primarily focused on the roads going in and out. There's 13 of them. And the ham radio station, you guys have been hearing about that for a while. The parts and pieces are finally being ordered for that. And hopefully, they will be up and running right around June 30th. And the big one, the paperwork for the Airport Master Plan Grant is complete. And we should be receiving that grant offer in May. So then with that, that would kickstart the master plan layout, which is a pretty lengthy project. It's like an 18-month project. And it's going to involve some public hearings and input from airport users and all kinds of stuff. And then the, remember, you recall the NEPA, the project that.
By the salmon holdup?
Whatever. Okay, well, that environmental report is completed and approved by the FFA. So that would allow the airport to receive grant funds for that turf taxi lane project. So that's good news. And EPUT and Douglas Faznet are working with the airport to run electrical lines from Dale Cooney to Garden Lake Park to provide faster, better internet out at the airport. And that project is coming up at the end of the month. I believe they're going to start doing that. And most of the big work will be done at night to prevent any disruption. And what else we got? Oh, something a little bit, I thought was a little new. The, you know, we always see fire airplanes and equipment during the summer fire season. Well, this year, the ODF is actually going to contract with the airport to reserve a spot. So I thought that was, you know, that's pretty good. And then events that are coming up. ODART is planning their Cascade Drill. That's the one where they fly the food in from Washington and they fly it over to the coast. And the, kind of like in preparation for the big earthquake, Cascadia. And then, and hopefully, the ham-based radio station will be up so that they can test it during this exercise. And also, they're making preparations for the Fourth of July, the Young Eagle Flight. And last here is the, the commission will be planning a work session for May 14th at 5:30 to go over the tie-down. Hopefully, we wrap up the tie-down policy. And also to go over the 2024 accomplishments, where you guys will be hearing a full report for the 2024 accomplishments, which will be in June, right? The work session.
Yep.
And that's it. Next quarterly meeting will be July 9th. That's all I got.
That was a good one. On the, okay, yeah, what's my question? Oh, did the, anybody else got any questions for Counselor Garcia? Because I got one. Okay. On the salmon report, did they come back with anything worth listening to?
I have no idea. That would be a manager-humble question. All I know is it's completed.
Did they come back with a report that was worth listening to, young lady?
Not yet. It's still in the works. So the FAA is working on a programmatic plan that will bypass NIMPs, National Marine Fisheries Services. So that for the projects that we're doing, as long as we meet certain criteria, we won't have to go through the three- to five-year process of going through the NIM system. And that should be done sometime by the end of '25, early '26. But we were able to get our NEPA approved because we did a modification to standard for a turf, for two turf taxi lanes. We're building it to the strength to be able to hold pavement. So the time that we can get the NIMPs or the programmatic plan in place, we'll just take off the last six inches of turf, maybe an inch of rock, and be able to put down asphalt. So that's how we were able. We're going to lose bill money, which is not bill money anymore. It's IIF, IIGA money now.
I'll trust you. GA.
GA, thank you. And I, it used to be bipartisan infrastructure law, and I don't remember what. It's still infrastructure, I just don't remember jobs they put. Anyway, new acronym. But we're going to lose that at the end of '25 if we weren't able to spend it. So we had to get very creative, think outside the box, to be able to get those two taxi lanes in.
Awesome.
And the bill money only allows, is one of the few funding capabilities that allow us to do taxi, new taxi lanes and hangars. The AIP money does not allow us to do that.
Well, good job to you and the Airport Committee for doing that. Get creative. Thank you, Counselor Garcia. Lane Act, Counselor Kent. Back to you, sir.
This is another really brief one. Usually, it's an hour and a half to two-hour-long sessions. And there were a lot of absences. We were several people short of a quorum, so we couldn't do any voting on like minutes or anything like that. And even the one presenter that they had was ill. So it was a very brief thing, and nobody had the heart to throw questions at her after her presentation, which was on mobility. And she basically went over, there's a page on the Oregon Department of Transportation for Mobility Services. And it was basically just sort of like talking through that. So, and then afterwards, we talked about administrative stuff. They sent out a survey to all of us who represent the various Lane County towns and areas, and wondering how we want to meet, if the once-a-month thing is still working, if we wanted to do every other month, or maybe two months on, one month off. Right now, it's 10 times a year. We have a break in July for the summer, and then the first meeting in January, because new people are getting sworn in, we don't meet then. So that was basically, it was over in half an hour. And it was, it was interesting.
We take the wins when you get them.
Exactly. That'll probably be my only short report of my one lane act.
All right, that it?
Oh, that is it. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And we'll head on to presentations. Ms. Jenny Donnelly, you're first, young lady. Nice shirt.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We did, Joe and I did a little recording today for Announcing Movies at the Park, so we both had shirts that show our local pride.
Excellent.
So hello, Mayor Smith, councilors, and Manager Nevel. My name is Jenny Donnelly. I'm the board president of Crestwell First. In your packet, you'll find my official report, but what I'd like to share with you tonight is more from my heart. For those of you that don't know me, I've lived in Crestwell for eight years with my husband Aaron and our dog Rags. One of my first city council meetings I attended, the Crestwell First President at the time was giving his yearly report. And his report moved me to tears. And shortly after that, I joined the board. I consider it an honor to be part of a group that's highly dedicated and cares deeply for our community. Our board members are Don Amberg, Joel Higdon, Kevin Prochou, Derek Isaacson that's with us, Joel Walters is our vice president, Lindsay Quigley Johnson is our secretary, and Curtis Thomas, who you might know, is our treasurer. For those of you that don't know very much about Crestwell First, we connect, we contract with the City of Crestwell to manage and distribute the community grant fund. Each year, the city budgets an amount, and our board decides which nonprofit in Crestwell receives those funds. Our 2025 list of recipients were the Family Relief Nursery, the IRC, which is the Intergenerational Reading Collaboration, Hope and Safety Alliance, that's formerly known as Women's Space, Community Food for Crestwell, the Crestwell Clubhouse, Family Resource Center, Caring for Crestwell Kids, and Community Sharing. Our current grant maximum is $3,000 per year. We work very diligently to ensure that all of the city funds stay in Crestwell and fit within our mission statement, which is connecting people who care to causes that matter for the betterment of Crestwell. So now that you know who we are, let me tell you a little bit about some exciting things that we're working on. Last year, the Heritage Foundation transferred ownership of the Historic Schoolhouse on Second Street to our organization. This has been a very new and exciting endeavor for our group, and we are learning as we go. But the most important things our board agrees on is that we want to keep the building available for community use and preserve its historical value. We're working on creating a website and Facebook page for the schoolhouse, and so far, we've had a very good response with people wanting to use the space. It was really fun to see the photos of a wedding that was there in the fall, and to be part of the Halloween party that we hosted with the clubhouse. Between April and December, the space was occupied 35 times. We hold a fundraiser during the holidays that we call the One Stop Giving, but it's up on our website year-round. It's a place that the community can give a tax-deductible donation to the local organizations they care about by going to our website or mailing in a check and designating where they would like the funds to be used. When we receive donations that are directed to the General Crestwell First Fund, we tuck those away for use for any funding requests that may not fit into the standards or specifications that the city gives us for their grant funds. We recently formed a PR committee, and they're coming up with new and exciting ways to spread the word about Crestwell First. So keep an eye out for us in the future. Plan to be at many of the movies at the park and the National Night Out. So on to the really good stuff. This is the kind of information that tugs on my heartstrings and makes me so thankful to live in a city where people take care of each other. I asked a few of our organizations to share about the good work they're doing, and here's what they said. First, Catherine Dumas, Family Resource Center Coordinator, said, "Since 2019, the Resource Center has grown 140%, serving around 600 children in 2024 through various programs, including school supplies assistance, diaper deliveries, early literacy programming, parent workshops, season of giving, and other basic needs assistance." For the 2024 holiday season, they were able to team up with the High School Leadership Program and provide Thanksgiving mealboxes to 51 families, something they've not done before. They were able to keep the utilities on for six families who received shut-off notices with no other way to pay, and assist 10 children with sports feeds so they could play. Season of Giving was a success, providing gifts to 260 children from 108 families, made possible by the generous support of the Crestwell community. Secondly, Susan Blatchnick, the Community Food for Crestwell Programs Manager, shared with me this moving information for the fiscal year of 2023-24. A lot of numbers here, so. They distributed more than 186,000 pounds of food at a value of around $294,000. They distributed to 354 unique households 5,296 times. They served 11,331 adults and 4,542 children in total. And they facilitated a total of 2,584 volunteer hours to engage our community in creating access to food. I follow their Facebook page, and I can attest that they are there to serve in both the hard times and the good times, whether it's icy, foggy, or just plain hot. Summarizing the words from Shannon Dennehy at Food for Lane County, "With every food box, hot meal, and sack lunch, they uplift our community by demonstrating love and making everyone stronger." Last but not least, one of my favorites is Caring for Crestwell Kids. I'll just sum up what they do. They provide slightly worn or new shoes and clothing to children in all three of our schools. It's just that simple and so impactful. Wrapping it up, on behalf of our entire board, I want to say thank you to the City of Crestwell for their continued generosity in budgeting such a meaningful amount for us each year. And to Mayor Smith and City Council, thank you for your support and for voting to allocate these funds. The impact these resources have on our community, especially for those who need it most, is truly significant. My ask this evening is simple. As the needs in our community continue to grow, I hope you'll consider increasing our funding in the future budgets. Your support is truly, it truly makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
And anyone have any questions?
Counselors, any question? Counselor Holt?
First of all, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. It's very beneficial to the community. I do have to ask, though, I'm very curious. It says that two grant requests did not align with the mission of the city's funding program. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah.
Because I'm really disappointed to see particularly that the FBLA not be funded.
So, and something like that, we look to use our other funds for something like that. So we work with those grant requests that we don't use city funds for, and we try to use our own funds for those. So we haven't necessarily nailed down the specifics of what we're going to do with them yet, but we are in communication with them.
Can you tell me specifically what doesn't align with your mission?
You know, I would have to reread the grant. It's been quite a while.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's all right, then. I'm just curious to know what kind of stipulations we've put on that would stop that.
You know what we do is we generally try to make the funds go as far as possible. So we would say, if it's a group, a small, small group, we would typically grant something that's going to help a larger group in the community. So that's one of the things, is we want to make the money go as far as we can. Does anybody else remember about the FBLA?
It's okay, I don't really. It was just a curiosity.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look back at it, because I can't remember right now, and send you an email if you'd like.
I would like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counselors, anything else?
Yeah, just curious, I was just curious about the Family Relief Nursery, great program. You guys do awesome, amazing work. But does the little description there, does that just need to be updated a little bit or something? Or am I just not understanding? The Crestwell Relief Nursery needs to gain the support and involvement of parents who are under stress. Should there just be support, support them? And then there's a little line about the pandemic.
Yeah.
Crestwell outreach and parents require an increase in home-based services during the pandemic. Does that just need to be updated probably or something?
It's older information that I got from them, probably, yeah. And I think the word "needs" is probably something that came directly from their website. That's usually what I try to do, is take like a description that they give and put it in instead of using my own words. And it's, I think that's what they're just basically saying is that that's their need.
Like their mission statement or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That makes sense.
Counselor Kent, you got it all.
Yeah, no question. I just, I just left Crestwell First. And I got to say that every time you come, and I see so many things, like when we went through the ice storm, the way the community pulled together, when somebody's fence gets destroyed or set on fire, the community comes together to help them rebuild. Whenever there's somebody who, for health reasons or whatever, can't like get their lawn mowed, somebody will come on and do that. It's just such a great community, and I love working toward that. And then there's times like day-to-day things when there aren't these specific, obvious things, and that's, I love having you to fill in those gaps and to really get things distributed in such a good way. You do such great work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I'll go ahead and say thank you. I appreciate all you guys do and the team that you have. To go after the kids and with the shoes, that's important to me. You know, I know how kids can feel when you don't grow up with a lot of money, and you might not have the coolest or hippest new stuff. And to give them some confidence in their life, and it may be small, but we have no idea how much that confidence could change their world. So with the clothes and the shoes, I really appreciate that. I mean, all these projects are fantastic and appreciate the hard work that you do.
Thank you.
And again, the team does, and it is important, and I'm glad that Crestwell can fund it, and so all the taxpayers of Crestwell can pat themselves on the back that we are funding that, and we are trying to help each other, and that is the entire community trying to help. And, you know, I would, I'd recommend, maybe you don't, or maybe say it now, but what is your webpage, or do you have one so people can go to?
Yeah, it's crestwellfirst.org. Super simple.
Make sure I skip that out there, so.
And if anybody wants to send us a check, it's P.O. Box 1.
Always be selling. I want to make sure it's on camera if anybody's listening, so that it is out there. Maybe we can ask Heather to make sure, and maybe it is on the city website, I just don't always see it, but I want to make sure that it is out there.
Thank you.
And your guys' mission, what you guys do, needs to be out there so that we can keep the dollars close to home, so we can help our own. You know, we got to help our own, and we got to have the heart and the lungs strong before we can start helping our hands and fingers, so.
That's right. Good way to say it.
I appreciate, appreciate what you guys do. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, presentation number B, if that makes sense. Cody Savvy, Isler. You got the short straw tonight, my man.
I know, I was just thinking that.
Cody says he's limiting it to 45 minutes. We were able to negotiate up to 15 minutes.
Good job.
Well, it's tough to present the audit after that. So my name is Cody Savvy. I'm an audit partner with Isler CPA. For returning counselors, if you're wondering where the normal guy is, he's still around, but as he approaches retirement, and I entered the partnership this past December, we're working on transitioning clients over to me. So here I am. So with that, let's jump straight into the presentation. And Jim, can you hit the first slide? So the first set of items I want to go over is some of our required board communications and the contents of those communications. So the first item up there is management responsibilities. In the context of an audit, management really has two primary responsibilities. The first of which is the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And two, for the design, implementation, and maintenance of the internal control system. I can't emphasize the second one enough. It's really the foundation that accounting is built on. Whatever your objectives may be, a properly designed internal control system can really mitigate the risk of not achieving those objectives. And so embedded in that, one of our required communications is regarding new accounting policies. Typically, those relate to when there's new accounting standards that come out. There were really no new accounting standards in this past year, and so there were no new accounting policies adopted by management. So the second item, auditor's responsibility. First and foremost, we need to conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards. By doing this, our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. An important thing to note there is through an audit, we obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance. So inherent in every audit is the risk that you can have a perfectly designed, perfectly executed audit, and misstatements may still exist. So when we're conducting the audit, we're looking for reasonable assurance that material misstatements do not exist. And so we do this through a various set of procedures. Planning is a big phase in the audit. We're really looking at significant balances there and trying to identify where the risk is at. Once we've accomplished that, then we apply a set of audit procedures to those significant balances. Usually, there's three primary tests that we do over account balances. First of which is test of controls, looking at controls, making sure they're operating effectively. If we can rely on controls, then we can essentially reduce the other types of testing that we do. We also do test of details. It's a pretty traditional audit-type test, pulling a sample of transactions, looking at supporting documents, and making sure they've been appropriately recorded. And finally, we use substantive analytics. So we're looking for correlations between two balances or a balance and certain other factors, and trying to predict the current year balance. Through our audit methodology, we have established thresholds that we set. We compare the expected balance to actual, and differences outside of that need to be investigated. If there's more information we can incorporate in our analysis, then we can do that, kind of reperform that analysis. But if not, then we resort to other types of testing to obtain that reasonable assurance over the balances. After that, we wrap up the audit and issue the audit opinion. And that essentially concludes our responsibilities as auditors. So the next item, significant findings. This primarily relates to the system of internal control. We're required to report significant deficiencies and material weaknesses to those charged with governance. Happy to say that we had no significant deficiencies nor material weaknesses as part of the 2024 audit. The next item we're required to communicate is related to corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Through the course of our audit, we had two corrected misstatements. We identified those through our audit procedures, reviewed them with management, management agreed with our assessment of it, and therefore corrected those misstatements. We had no uncorrected misstatements as part of the audit. The next two items, difficulties encountered during the audit, disagreements with management. Difficulties, there really weren't any. I think turnover with city management caused a bit of a roadblock for us to move forward with the audit. So there was a bit of delay in being able to continue the audit and get it finished. But other than that, I wouldn't say there were any difficulties, and there were no disagreements with management. The next item, management representations. Pretty standard item within an audit. At the end of every audit, professional standards require that you obtain a list of management representations made to the auditors that we relied on as part of our made to the auditors, um, that we relied on as part of our audit. Um, again, very standard process, so we'll be obtaining that letter from Jim here in a few weeks and getting everything finalized. Next couple items, management consultations with other auditors. If we become aware of any of those, we're required to communicate that to council. Um, to our knowledge, there have been no such consultations. And finally, other findings and issues. This really relates to compliance with laws and regulations that are material to the financial statements. If we identify anything related to that in the course of our normal audit procedure, we're required to let you all know. But again, happy to say that there were no other findings or issues. And so moving to the next slide. Um, Oregon is fairly unique in that we're one of two states where the state requires auditors to look at a set of Oregon minimum standards. New Jersey is the other one, if you're curious. Um, and so we design a set of procedures to go through those items and make sure that the city is in compliance with them. The first of which, deposits of public funds. Really, we're just looking to make sure that funds are deposited with approved state institutions, uh, financial institutions, excuse me. Um, no issues there. Debt limitations, the state has limits on the amount of debt an organization can take out by the type of organization. So a city has their own threshold, a county has a different threshold, special districts, they have their own thresholds. Um, and so we take a look at that, make sure that you're not exceeding that limit. And this just applies to general obligation debt. So based on our analysis, currently the city does not have any debt that applies to this statute, and so no issues there. The budget, that's one of the more significant areas that we look at as part of the Oregon minimum standards process. It's really a comprehensive review of the budget. Um, and so when we do the fiscal year twenty-four audit, we're really looking at the fiscal year twenty-five budget and that process. We start with the budget committee, make sure they're electing a presiding officer, approving a budget that comes before council for their review and adoption. Um, then we go through that entire budget document, making sure beginning balances are reasonable, resources equal requirements, expenditures are appropriated in accordance with state statute, um, those kind of things. We followed all the way through, through the adoption process, also looking at making sure that meetings are appropriately advertised in accordance with state statute. Yeah, I think that's, that's about it with the budget. Um, no issues to report there. Insurance, we're by no means insurance experts, so we do more or less a reasonableness check on that compared to the prior year, inquire about any significant changes there, um, or really anything that sticks out to us. But again, we're not necessarily trained in insurance, so it's a little hard for us to say, yep, that's the right amount, or oh, no, you need to bump that up, or it's too much. That's just not what, what we're trained in. Um, highway revenue tax, the city gets some money from the state related to, um, gas tax. And so that money is restricted to specific uses. So we pull a sample of, um, those funds, make sure that they're used on allowable type projects. Um, after we pull the sample, no issues to report. Everything looked fine there. Investments of public funds, state has state statutes governing what you can and cannot invest in. Usually prefer, uh, governments to invest in more low-risk type options. Seeing that the city only has funds in the local government investment pool, no issues to report back there. And so this next one, budgeted expenditures, this is really the one thing we do with the current year budget is we compare the, uh, final appropriated numbers to the actuals. Anything that exceeds those appropriations, we're required to report that. Nothing to report there. Um, and finally, the single audit. So another part of Oregon minimum standards that we have to look at is programs funded from outside sources. If we're doing a single audit, that's one of the primary ways we look at that. We also do it through revenue testing. If you receive funds that's restricted to a certain use, we take a look and make sure that those funds are being used on allowable sources. And so for the 2024 single audit, we looked at coronavirus state and local recovery funds that made up about six hundred and twenty thousand out of the one point one million on the, uh, schedule of federal awards. Um, we ended up having one finding related to that. A fairly new federal requirement is that buy America, build America preference provisions be included in contracts. Um, and one of the contracts we looked at did not include that language. We discussed it with management and management had vetted the manufacturer within this contract and, and noted that it was within the United States, um, but simply didn't have the language in the contract. So did their due diligence to make sure they're meeting their requirement, but unfortunately, the requirement is that that language be included in that contract. So we didn't have much of an option other than to report that as a finding. But it did not relate to any question cost. Everything as far as that goes appeared to be fine to us. And so moving to the next slide, we'll take a look briefly at a, uh, few of the changes in the financial statements. Up here, we have the general fund change in fund balance, um, for the current year and the past six. Um, you can see that eighteen through twenty follows a similar trajectory. Um, and then in 2020, going to 2021, fairly big jump. In that year, the city started receiving more grant funding, um, from pandemic-related sources. Some of the, uh, federal legislation through that sent the city some additional funds. And also I believe that was right around the time that the, uh, public safety fee, um, was increased. So those were really the two big items that caused that increase. Um, didn't see much on the expenditure side that really caused that other than kind of normal changes, increases to salaries and wages, general insurance, health insurance, fairly, fairly standard stuff. But if we look at twenty-three to twenty-four, we can see that in that year, the expenditures were a bit more than the revenues, um, and compared to other years as well. Um, a big reason for that was related to the ice storm. There, uh, were expenditures related to that that the city had to use their unrestricted fund balance for and are, have submitted a claim to FEMA to be reimbursed for those monies. But as I'm sure a lot of you know, it can take a few years for FEMA to process those claims and approve them and send out the funds. So now that we can see the kind of change in fund balance, what does that, what does that really mean? And so up here, we have a metric that we've developed at Isler and we call this days in fund balance. And what this is, is an approximation of how much you have sitting in fund balance that you could operate with in the next fiscal year if you did not receive any additional funding. And so we take the expenditures for the current year, we divide them by three hundred and sixty-five to get an approximation of the cost to operate the city per day. And then we take that number and divide it by fund balance, which gives us an approximate days that you could operate. And so you can see over the past, uh, seven years that it's, it's decreasing, which may appear, you know, to be a negative thing. I don't necessarily think it is. Um, at two hundred and thirty-three days, that's roughly seven and a half months that you have sitting in, in fund balance that you could operate with. Um, my understanding is that the city has a policy where they're, uh, attempting to maintain at least thirty percent of the operating cost per year in fund balance, which is approximately a hundred and ten days. So you can see in all these years, the city has far exceeded, um, that policy. And a common question we get is like, well, where should we be at? There's really no perfect answer to that question. It really depends on the specific situation of the government, um, and what they have coming forward. Um, I think, you know, with looking at this number, you don't want it to be too low. Some, you know, stuff happens. You want to have enough there to be able to continue operating. But also I think for a lot of, uh, more political reasons, you also don't want that fund balance to be growing too big. Um, so in my opinion, the city's kind of right in that sweet spot. Um, you don't have too much, but you also don't have too little should something happen. Um, so with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and open it up for any questions.
Counselors? So good. And take a minute.
I've got a couple of questions. Major and minor findings. How many did we have?
Uh, when you say major and minor findings.
Major ones that where you have to give a report back how it got corrected?
So I think mainly the, uh, the single audit finding will be the one that gets reported out into the world. Um, but in my opinion, with single audit stuff, if you're using the money on what you're supposed to be using it for, that's really what they care about. Um, a lot of this stuff, it's kind of a, you know, okay, you know, do better type thing. But unless you're using funds on something that you shouldn't be using it on, I don't necessarily feel that it has big consequences.
And next question is, um, this is two hundred and thirty-three days. How much, how much per day is that?
Uh, I don't have that number right here, but I want to say it was somewhere between seven and eight thousand.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Counselors?
Great job, Jim.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to discussion items. Cliff, I'm a good man. You are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We were at the last council meeting. The council requested an update on a couple of items on the Second Street, uh, project. And so myself and Spencer and our engineers got together and tried to address some of these issues. And we have a report to you. I'm going to go over. Uh, the first one, if you want to flip or look on your iPads, to the drawing in the back. This is the new design that we have came up with. And this is addressing, uh, the safety and driveway of Brandon, forgive me, I forget his last name, uh, that lives directly across from the bakery. So if you look on that design, uh, there are two parking stalls that have been removed.
We don't have anything up yet. Thank you.
Page nine.
Okay, as I was saying, there's two parking stalls that have been removed, which allow a bulb out to be in place around the driveway, which gives approximately eighteen to twenty feet of distance between what would be the first parking area and the edge of that driveway. So that's a safety buffer. Uh, so if the, the vehicle was backing out of that driveway, there should be, uh, enough visual area to be able to see to back out. And it also places the rear of the vehicle, uh, approximately the same depth out into the street as those parking stalls. So this, uh, creates a, another safety, uh, measure so that they can back out into the street with, uh, without having, uh, visual impairment there. Um, the next question was about the fencing for Brandon. And if you look, uh, kind of on the corner of where that sidewalk kind of turns around, the south corner of Brandon's property there, there's one little forty-five degree angle that the fence is going to have to be moved to, and that's to accommodate the full width of the sidewalk for eighty-eight. Um, that's, that section of fence will be removed and reinstalled, uh, to existing conditions at no expense to the homeowner. That will be part of the, uh, construction project and the city will pay for that. Uh, the next one was, um, there was a request to mark the back of a right-of-way. So property owner would know, uh, where their property is. This could be accomplished during construction staking. We can put, uh, stakes out there where the right-of-way and the, uh, private property meet. So they can be able to understand where their property lines are. And then the additionally, if you look on, uh, that drawing again, this reflects, uh, the meeting that council had that, that they gave us direction to go with option number one. And this is concerning the bakery. Um, you can see, which would be right across from Brandon's house, you can see that kind of dashed line. That is an easement that we are getting from the bakery, uh, to be able to put, uh, public, well, public access pedestrian area over onto bakery property. So that's an easement that we have obtained from the bakery. And it also gives them, uh, a little bit of, uh, easement into the parking on that side. So I believe that covers the few issues that council had asked us to address.
I think so. Counselors got any questions? I'll start. Um, I believe that was Cher's property that wanted to be outlined. Does she, will she still potentially need to move her fence?
No, she can if she wants, but no.
So is the prop, is what you're saying, the right-of-way, the dashed line?
Correct.
From where you're putting the sidewalk, what is that to that dashed line?
Uh, I don't have a scale, but approximately five-ish feet from the right-of-way to the back of sidewalk.
That keeps changing. You said four feet last time.
I said approximately.
So it keeps changing and that's an issue. So when can we get an actual plan that is actually being done?
Uh, I think I have one that doesn't represent this new approved drawing that I can scale off. I don't have a scale and this drawing is not to scale. That's why I said it's approximately four or five feet. That right-of-way, you know what the staking is? It's approximately three feet inside your fence where it is now.
Two feet, eight inches.
Pretty close to three feet.
Not that I don't want to give you guys anything. I really am asking, when can we see a plan? You've put it out to bid. What did you put out to bid? Why are we not being shown what is actually happening?
I feel like you are, in my opinion. Um, this is what's happening, but like Cliff said, it is approximate. So there is going to be a little bit of buffer space in the project.
We haven't gotten anything.
I don't know that you're going to get an engineer plan.
We get little papers, but nothing since you guys have shrunk the sidewalk. Nothing. We haven't gotten any.
Did we shrink, shrink the sidewalk? I thought we're just, we shrunk the payment for the sidewalk, not the actual.
We moved the sidewalk from eleven foot down to seven foot. So you can see that, that kind of buffer there so we could get away from the fencing.
That hard line right there would be her, her fence and property line right now currently, wouldn't it?
Correct. The, the, the line that has the little circles.
Yep.
That represents her fence and fence posts.
Okay. Spencer, you got anything to?
Yeah, the, the only thing I was going to say is part of the, the final layout of this won't be done until council says we're good with going with this. And then, and then we'll get finalized. It'll be a change order to, oh, I think they're trying to make the change before the contract.
Correct. They're trying to make these changes.
Before we actually sign the contract.
Will we vote on this next council meeting?
There's nothing to really vote on if, if you're comfortable with this concept.
Did you take that second driveway out entrance?
No, it's still there. For your property?
For that sidewalk that I jump over, I drive over the sidewalk right now for, yeah.
Yeah. No, there's, there's two driveways to your property. It's not reflected on here. It doesn't go far enough down.
Counselors? Counselor Castillo?
That's, uh, four spaces in front of Brandon's home, Cliff, or?
Uh, those are four spaces and most of those are in front of the old historical, uh, schoolhouse.
Okay, so that little weird little spot just before the bulb out is just.
That's why I thought the motorcycle.
Yeah, motorcycle.
That is a space.
I know the space, okay.
Oh, it is a space. Okay, so there's five then.
One, two, three, four.
That C is one.
It stops at the C.
Okay, stops at the C. Okay, okay. So that's just dead space there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor?
Um, I just wanted to say that, that, uh, to, to your question about, you know, why haven't I seen this? Why haven't I seen that? Um, we've made a lot of changes. There's been a lot of moving parts in this. So I think we just have to kind of, you know, be patient and wait, wait for things to come in as they do because we're, we're experiencing the same thing, you know, that it's, it's recently constantly changing. And, um, and, uh, it seems like we don't always have all the information. So I just want to apply, Cliff, I think, um, under the circumstances, uh, you guys have really done a great job navigating this. So, thank you.
Counselors, anybody else from the audience? Go ahead.
One thing I wanted to address was the, a couple of things. One being that LTD no longer has a seat for people to be sitting around down on F Street. Uh, they still need, do they still need to be coming down Second Street all the time? Why can't they just take a right and go downtown? Because that way eliminate a lot of the traffic coming through there because they do come through Second Street at a fair. through Second Street at a fairly decent rate of speed. And then the other issue I wanted to address was the liability of the homeowner for sidewalk. We just missed, when I say we, I mean the city and myself, a fairly decent lawsuit about three years ago. When I first had my driveway and that made with a general contractor that I use as a personal friend of mine, um, he had it set up with regular apron in the front to pour, and he called me and he said that, uh, we're not gonna go through with that, and I asked him why, and he said, because the city told us that there needs to be wheelchair accessibility. And so what that made is a really sharp angle, have you, have you seen my driveway, Mayor? Uh, either tear off the front end of a car, but worse than that, we had a garage sale, uh, showing how it was not wheelchair accessible, a man came up with a wheelchair to go to see the garage sale, he flipped over backwards, and fortunately, we caught him in time before he hit his head on the, on the road.
Thank goodness.
And the first thing, one of the people that was buying from us said, you just missed a major lawsuit, and I told him, I said, no, not me, the city did. And so when I looked up information regards to how much liability we have as property owners, what I'm finding is that we don't have any liability unless we abuse the sidewalk somehow where it makes it dangerous. And I can understand that, but when somebody just comes walking down and twists an ankle and falls down, I'm not gonna be liable for something like that when the sidewalk is just totally fine. So I've got a real issue with regards to the, uh, the liability situation, because to me personally with that, it doesn't make sense that we're told, we're putting in a sidewalk, you're gonna pay for it, it's gonna be ours, and you gotta be liable for it. That'd be equivalent to me parking my car in front of City Hall, saying it's my car, but it's your responsibility to change the oil and maintain this thing until I get the chance to use it. So I think we really need to take a serious look at this liability issue in regards to this.
I think you bring up a good question on the liability of the wheelchair, we've talked about cars and cars damaging it, but we have not brought up that, so thank you for doing that, that's something I haven't thought about. Cliff?
I think I can address both of those. Uh, F Street still has a, a bus stop there, and there's folks that wait for the bus, I seen it today.
It's pretty rare if it is.
So, it is still a bus route, and unless LTD decides to take that bus station down, it'll still be a bus route, and they'll still continue to pick folks up there, um, that's what I know about that. As far as ADA accessibility, um, I can speak on this pretty fluently, because the city has went through some litigation in the last couple of years, and I sat in, uh, court for over a week on this exact situation. The ADA accessibility is linear down the sidewalk, it has nothing to do with the driveway apron, the driveway apron is for vehicles only, and if some, uh, wheelchairs or ADA folks that need accessibility decide to go down and travel that driveway approach, that is not an ADA acceptable approach, it's only a vehicle approach. So, the ADA only is the travelable length of the sidewalk until you get to an ADA approved ramp, it's not the driveway approach, so there isn't liability on the ADA on that.
Does it would have been my liability on it?
The courts ruled in our favor, uh, with the one instance that there was a suit against the city, and we, uh, won that, that, that's not an A, approved ADA accessible area.
So if he was having a garage sale and somebody, something happened, is it gonna be on him for your experience, Spencer?
Yeah, I, I think generally, there's gotta be some negligence, so if there was stuff that was on the sidewalk, or some, they trip over something, then you're, you're potentially gonna have liability in that situation, if the sidewalk gets into complete disrepair, that could be a liability issue, but if the sidewalk is meeting standards, um, and we get, uh, you know, cities get claims on sidewalks all the time, uh, and, and unless there's a negligence, there, there's, you know, the insurance companies are not paying claims, you know, for sidewalks, so there's gotta be something negligent about.
Yeah, there was no negligence, there was nothing on the sidewalk, no, no stuff to sell or anything of that nature, it was just that he tried coming up.
All right, recover. One second, I wanna, I wanna finish the LTD, please. On the LTD, do we have the authority to ask them to alternate or, or remove F Street and focus on this stop over here, since it's only a couple of blocks away?
I'm not positive, we'd have to look at their franchise agreement, if they have a franchise agreement with us that kinda outlines where they run, when they run.
They dictate.
Well, I don't know that they dictate, but.
I think there could be a discussion about it, so.
Do you think that's something we could bring up to, I mean, if it is only a couple of blocks, I know it's, you know, maybe inconvenient for some of those who use it, but if it's not well, very well used, I don't know why they can't walk two blocks and, and come to the main one and focus the traffic out of the neighborhood.
The community that you're on, do they deal with the transportation issues as well?
I could probably connect with somebody there, but, uh, it's more of a higher level scope than.
It's more in law enforcement, is what we did on the public safety, I think.
No, no, not public safety.
Oh, oh, no, or Main Act?
Right, right, right.
Okay.
But, uh, we, we can follow up with them and have a discussion with them.
If that's, I mean.
I don't know if the.
We need to do, or, obviously, a study to see, or, to see if it's being used, and if it's not, then we need to remove it, what's the point of the avenue?
The vice chair now is, uh, Jameson, uh, auted from the president or, you know, chief officer of LTD, so.
We put that on the to-do list, Spencer?
Sure.
I do know that there's some low-income housing right there on that corner.
Yeah.
And then across the street is, uh, some adult housing that's low-income also, so I know that that's kind of a central location for those folks to be able to get public transportation.
There's also handicap.
Well, if it's used, then I wouldn't, I'm not suggesting it, but if it's not being used, then I would suggest getting rid of it.
Yeah, I would, I, I ride that bus almost every day, and people do get picked up there all the time.
Oh, okay.
And I think it's a really good location because, because of low-income apartments, well, low-income on both sides, and the bus has to turn around somewhere, so if they aren't going down Second Street, they got, I mean, they, they gotta turn around somewhere, so, either way, they're gonna find another street, turn around and get out of town.
What they, the road was being worked on?
I'm sorry?
When they were doing the water meters, when they were doing this stuff in the sewer, where did the bus go?
Uh, it went down, uh, it went down Second Street and then turned, uh, it still, it still stayed on the same route.
No.
Yeah, well, yeah, it came down Second Street, yeah.
Counselor Dicks?
Yeah, I know some people talk about the LTD buses and stuff like that, personally, I know their drivers, some of the drivers, and I know there's some of the safest drivers out there because they're under strict scrutiny on everything they do, so I know they're not speeding, they're not going around corners really sharp to go over, to curb them, and so, I know that they wouldn't be speeding around towns, uh, that, because, uh, that's a high-end job right there, that, uh, if you get it, you are a decent right, driver, and so, I know the safety part of that is, the bus drivers are very safe drivers, and they are very patient, uh, I mean, you see them sitting there waiting for traffic to move so they can pull out from the bus stop with their blinker on, but, um, so, I know they're, they're on a schedule as well as everybody else, but they still are safe drivers, so, I, if someone says that they're, they drive fast through the, the community, I know better, but, uh, I understand bigger equipment coming through is, uh, a concern to a lot of people, because you got a bigger, you got a big, uh, piece of equipment rolling down the road, you're gonna think it's faster anyways, um, just because it's so big coming at you, it, it's not actually speeding, but, and, so, to be hon, I mean, I was looking at too, with the fire station getting moved, fire engines being on that road, uh, buses being on that road, other trucks and stuff like that, I know they meet, uh, standards for the, all of that, but I wouldn't put that bus drivers are a danger to the community at all.
Okay. Cher, you got something else?
Yes, I did, Spencer, no.
Yes.
So, Wayne stated when he went to put in his driveway, the approach to his driveway, it was designed one-way, the city said, no, it wasn't proper, so it gave it a very sharp angle. The man, the person going up in the wheelchair flipped because of the angle, had absolutely nothing to do with obstructions, stuff in the driveway or anything, that's what he is saying, it's not taking it elsewhere, it's the angle. So, is he held responsible for something the city said had to be done a certain way? Now, back to the LTD, please do not, you may stand up for the bus drivers, but please do not call a person that they're making it up when they say they drive fast. I rode those buses for years, I watched them go down the street, and I had one approach me when I was backing my trailer up, and the guy kept coming at me. He could see me, he did not stop and let me just back up, that made me very nervous, and he did get called in. Also, LTD had all the opportunity to not turn down Second Street and drive over an active fire hose, and the driver did. People make mistakes, and yes, if they're behind time, yes, they do step on it.
So, answer, can you answer the first question?
Sure. Uh, the first question, um, you know, the person that's, that's in a wheelchair has responsibilities to go in areas where they can safely navigate, the requirement is that the sidewalk has to be ADA accessible, and if they did, if there was a steep slope on the sidewalk, that would be a potential liability issue, but just because there's a driveway, and, and the driveway doesn't have to meet ADA standards, doesn't mean it's safe for someone in a wheelchair to use, they have to, that's their own judgment about what they're using. And, uh, and so, I, you know, I'm not an attorney, but I don't think there'd be liability if someone's trying to navigate a slope that's too steep for them to navigate, because they're every place in town, um, you've got, you know, steep slopes, and so, you know, that's, uh, it's a different standard for the driveway than it is for the sidewalks.
Anything else on Second Street before Cliff?
Well, yeah, what we'll do, uh, once, you know, understand, if the Council is comfortable with this general configuration, we'll get those final plans to you once, once they get drafted, so they can, can see that, so.
Will you be connecting your sidewalk stuff to the driveway and making that to run smooth?
I'm not sure I understand the question, will the, will the back of the sidewalk to your driveway be a, a smooth transition?
Sure.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So you will make that connection because you're not going back that far?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then also regards to my driveway, I've been told that you're gonna correct that?
Your driveway is scheduled to be removed and be reinstalled, and it will be to, there's new standards since your driveway was put in, and so the, the new standards will apply to this new construction, which recesses the back of the sidewalk, makes the slopes lower, it's still not, uh, an ADA approved, uh, approach for a, a wheelchair to go up a driveway.
But it's not gonna be as steep as it is now?
It won't be as steep as it is now.
All right.
How many feet are we going into his driveway?
Uh, we're actually coming out.
Out, okay.
Yeah, farther into the street.
Okay. Counselor Dicks?
Uh, so the sidewalks raised at all on this a little bit?
Uh, it'll be a standard curb gutter sidewalk, so it'll be six inches above the street.
I mean, the crosswalks.
Oh, there, there's no raised crosswalks, no.
Okay, another question, Tim and Kim's property, their sidewalk dips, the sidewalk dips way down, and it goes up into the bakery asphalt, so theirs is a grind to get out of their driveway, is that going to be corrected? Will that become level, street, and a proper approach?
So curb gutter sidewalk will go all into the same standard, uh, height across Second Street, and if there's any need to adjust for back of, of sidewalk to driveway, that will be made, uh, with a, like a ten-foot approach into their, their property, so it'll have a slight slope, and there won't be any, you know, major bumps or, uh, major, uh, areas to traverse with a vehicle, it'll be a smooth transition into everybody's driveways.
Yeah, in those cases, property owners will have to issue, uh.
They'll have to give, and I think they've already got them, a right entry permit, so they can go in and make all of those transitions, uh, during construction.
Counselor Holt?
How many driveways are we replacing?
Or alter, or altering?
Or altering, yeah.
Uh, I don't have a specific number, I can give you the areas, from D Street to F Street, on the east side of the road, those are all staying as existing, all the rest of them have some sort of, uh, transition, and most of those are being replaced.
So quite a few?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause when I think about the cost coming down and what the lid looks like, I mean, that seems pretty reasonable to me, I think it would cost some of them more than that to put a, to pour a driveway, so, I just want it, that, that's why I ask, thank you.
Yeah.
Brandon's looks like it will be the most altered or.
It will be the most significant one, yeah.
Actually, there's been change, is it coming, on the one map we had, it looked like it was, uh, seven feet originally, and then another twenty, is that correct?
Uh, I don't know.
Was that from the property line back said twenty, and it looked like it was a?
I don't know the footage is, I know the original plan was from the back of, what shows right-of-way is that dash line.
Uh-huh.
Out to, not including the bulge out was eleven feet.
Okay.
And so now you see between the dash line and the back of the sidewalk, that's been removed, and the sidewalk that is proposed is seven feet, so I don't know how far out that bulge out is, I mean, if you, you know, kinda just estimating, it looks like it's maybe another fourteen feet out.
That's, because isn't the driveway about fourteen, width-wise?
To his driveway, I believe is twelve.
Twelve, okay, so yeah, that's definitely twelve to fourteen, and then we got a lot of two-inch, two-foot wing, three-foot wing.
Those should be three-foot wings.
Two-foot wings, okay. Anyone else, got any questions or comments?
I, I keep thinking about how difficult it is to, uh, drive along sometimes, uh, that, next to Farmland's Market where they have that, that.
Bulge out?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and, and I'm a little concerned about these bald outs, being, they, they just, I mean, on here, they just seem so close together, like if you have one car going one way and one going another, is there really room for, for them both? And are we concerned at all about people backing into each other when they're backing out of these spaces that are aligned to each other?
So there's room for two ten-foot, uh, driveways, and when folks back out of their parking stalls, it's going to be their responsibility to stay within their lane. Um, the bulge outs really are for two reasons, one is for pedestrian safety, because it, it makes the distance about, across the road shorter, and also it protects, uh, these angled parking, so that somebody doesn't run into them, and it also gives, uh, on a, would be on a, like the D Street side, it gives protected parallel parking, so somebody doesn't run into the back of the vehicle, so there's several safety measures, um, there's give and takes to every design, and this is sort of following what the standard has been for the downtown plan.
Plus, it's a traffic calming thing, to slow traffic down, it's a little more congested, so cars.
How many cars can we fit at the stop sign before they're overlapping a parking space?
Uh, I think it looks like two, maybe, or one and a half, um, I don't know, that's really a concern, there's.
I mean, it's not a concern until you start having three or four cars trying to turn left there, and three people trying to get out, but yeah.
Right, I mean, I encounter that at City Hall every day.
Yeah, no, I know, that, that's why I say, one of the things I don't like about Farmland is if you're turning right on there, it's not always clear if somebody's backing out, right? And, and that just seems super unsafe to me, and it just seems like we're adding more of that unsafety, I just, that's how I feel about it.
Yeah.
Um, I get the need, I just don't, you know.
I don't think you can.
So far along in the project, I'm not willing to make a big stink about it, I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's, that's what you get with, with angled parking, that's why it's not really preferred, but it gives a lot more parking in a smaller area.
I would have trouble backing out of that with my truck, I would not be able to stay in my lane, there's no way.
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna be frequent.
I'm not sure, I don't, I just don't understand why we didn't just go with parallel along that whole thing, because it just seems.
It would have killed a lot of parking spots, I think it was the original.
Yeah.
Original issue was parking spots.
Yeah.
That would have killed a lot.
I've got a question for, um, so it does say right here in front of this, and then it looks like it comes back, is this straight for the, the Second Street that's already been done for the first block? Because I know it's, goes like that, and then it kinda goes east a little bit to kind of curves the whole road.
Oh, are you saying, does the road shift over?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
And so is that lined up with what's here already?
It's lined up with what, how the road will flow when the project is over, it's not exactly how it is out there today. Uh, that, that is, uh, like Spencer said, that's a traffic calming, uh, device to be able to make you kinda make a little turn, so it slows traffic down.
Counselors, anyone else in the audience? No?
Okay, last but not least, we're having a pre-construction meeting on the seventh with Wildish and our engineering group, and we anticipate this to start, uh, mid-May, as long as Council agrees that this is the path forward.
So that's May seventh for the meeting?
Yeah.
What time, and is it here, up here?
It's two o'clock, and it's up here. It's 2 o'clock, and it's up here. It's in the room next door.
Conference room.
I'm assuming we can't all show up to that.
No.
Awesome, thanks, Cliff. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, Cliff, you said if this goes forward, this would start, the project would commence around, around...
I anticipate mid-May.
Mid-May?
We'll know for sure at that construction meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And so, so my option is that we're good to go with this design, and because we really do have, we're going to get this project going in mid-May, we've got to finalize this, so...
After speaking with Brandon, who's got the most to lose here, I think this will not satisfy him, but I think he'll be content with what we've done and the efforts made to make his approach safety. I know he's not going to be able to get a trailer, which is disappointing for him, and I feel bad for him that he can't get all of it, but I think Brandon's pragmatic, and I think we'll meet somewhere close to the middle for him, so I think he'll be okay with this.
Has he seen this now?
I text him a picture.
Okay.
He couldn't be here tonight, he planned to be, but he couldn't make it, so I texted him a picture real quick, because this is new to me. I mean, obviously, we had to pack it earlier this week, but I didn't send this to him, so I texted him a picture real quick tonight, so he'd have it, and then he still has a chance to argue on May 7th, so.
No, May...
Or, wait, I thought you said 7th.
Yeah, no, May 7th is the, that's the meeting with the contractors, where they're laying out their schedule and going through all the procedures.
What was the day then, that you, I thought you said...
That was May 7th.
Okay.
That's the meeting.
Oh, I thought you said we were having another one.
No, 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 no. I think we're done.
Yeah, okay.
Unless you want, don't want to be done, I think we're there, so...
Well, I'm not going to put it like that, that I want to be done. Citizens' concerns, but I feel like we've done the best we can, I think we've met in the middle as best we can, and some of the questions that they still have, I think, is just pretty much standard procedure for every city when it comes to how much sidewalk is paid for, and the curbs and the gutters and the responsibilities. And although I'm not a par for the course kind of guy, and I'm willing to fight the man on a lot of things, we do got to move forward, and we do got to have a street that's safe for everyone, and I feel like we have met in the middle quite a bit. So I'm content with this. I'm not going to speak for Brandon, but I'm gonna kind of attempt to, and I think he'll be okay with this.
Did you address the fact that he asked, what is his responsibility for taking care of that sidewalk and curb? He sent it to me also. So he saw this out with all the people.
I think it's almost all in front of Crestwell first now.
Yeah, so...
Pretty much.
Yeah, most of the, well, yeah, because that's your property, so he's only going to have maybe 15 feet of sidewalk to be technical, technically liable for.
Yeah, but the other thing on the angled parking too, there's quite a bit of angled parking in town, and just on the other side of Second Street, that sidewalk's got to be 70 years old, and it's nothing to worry about angled parking. It, you know, the sidewalk's not going to get damaged by angled parking, you know, based on looking at angled parking off the town.
Is it his responsibility to repair it when it is?
Well, I think, you know, chances are the curb would get hit, and typically, the city is responsible for repairing the curb, so, and that's kind of the first line of defense, so.
Yes, these are his questions, if he wanted...
So it'd be his responsibility to maintain it, but if we, if somebody damages it, then it would be on their insurance, but it's the city's job to repair the curb and the gutter, so that would not be his liability. His other question he has, they wrote down, is the power pole being relocated?
It is the, just back out sidewalk area, so it's just being moved back about four feet.
I'm not sure, I don't see it on the plan, or am I missing it, where currently at?
No, this plan doesn't reflect the power pole, but it's being moved back into that kind of dead spot between the back of the sidewalk and where the fence is.
In that 45 area? Where the fence kind of 45?
No, I think it's in between shares property and Brandon, so it's on the other side.
So it's right at the corner, they're bringing it straight back.
Yeah.
I'm happy for talking to the guy.
It'll be moved back into the right of way behind the sidewalk.
So, Brandon's concerned that, that still has compounded the difficulty for navigating the space. So you're also trying to figure out people who can back up a trailer and come back out of vehicles. You have a lot of, do I think you guys have really, you've looked at it in an engineering, you've looked at it in a city, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to build this, but in all reality, watching day-to-day what goes on there, people can't even back out and turn. They back, we cross the, it's hysterical. They'll hit the trashcans backing up, they'll get really close to the vehicles. Hey, modern vehicles have cameras even. It's quite hysterical. Do all vehicles go fast on there? Some of them fly. And I don't think this is going to, I really don't think this is going to work, but it's on, okay, it's on you. When accidents happen, it is on you guys, because...
I think it would be on the person that had the accident, not me, but you can use the entirety of your opinion.
It was something that was very unnerving, that somebody was going to get hit for the people running the stop sign, because of the people blocking the stop sign. Thank you, Lord, it didn't happen. It's not something I want to see.
Nope.
I think you've got a bigger can of worms, but it's yours. It is yours.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, Cliff.
Thanks.
All right. Jim, ready to talk to us about toughies?
So I provided a schedule in there for three projects over nine years, and I like to follow charts while I'm doing the language in the text here, so I put it up on the screen as well for folks to take a look at. As you know, the street fund is a special revenue fund, it has to be used to do street maintenance and construction. We get our funds from the state, related to state gas tax and vehicle registration fees. Street funding expenditures, including staffing, material, and operations and maintenance of cities' roads, come out of those fees that we receive from the state, and then any funds over and beyond operational costs go to the Street Capital Improvement Reserve Fund to be held for future street projects. Transfers in the Street Capital Improvement Reserve include state highway tax, highway use taxes that I just talked about, and additionally, we transfer the funds from the tough itself. There is a 1% of the state highway funds that has to go into pedestrian pathways, so bicycle footpath, parts of street construction.
Welcome to the new...
Additionally, the Street Capital Improvement Reserve Fund includes Oregon Department of Transportation, state FedEx exchange, or ODOT fund exchange monies. These grants are the city's portion of federal grant funds in exchange at 90 cents on the dollar, which relieves the city from the stringent federal regulations that the state has to follow on those. Further, we have SDC fees, and in preparing this year's audit, or this year's budget, excuse me, that you guys will get to here shortly, we realize that since we did the new SDC schedule and updated it in 2020, city has been collecting SDCs at a pretty good rate, thanks to some commercial projects that have been clicking off every year. And we still have inquiries of commercial projects that want to come to Crestwell. In years where reserve funds are not expended, they carry over into beginning fund balance, and they can be used in the future. Grant funding of residential streets is really difficult to secure, but we do have an end with the Safe Route Schools program. We do have 10th Street coming up on the schedule of street projects, and it is eligible, it's in our actual plan for Safe Route Schools, so we're going to apply for that grant. So we'll apply some of that to that project, which will help with the funding schedule that you see up on the display here. Street projects, we budget them when we can afford them, essentially, but we would like to be able to do one every three years. As you have experienced, there's about a year of engineering and discussion, and then go out to bid, get the contractor, and then there's the actual construction costs, and then my work on the backside of it is just making sure all those vendor invoices get paid, and we can complete everything with the funding that we've been given for the Further, the city has adopted using LEDs again. Last time we did an LED was in 15, or, excuse me, yeah, 20, 2010, 15 years ago. So this will be 16th LED with Second Street, and we have some pretty high estimates on construction costs, and a lot of that was related to the ARPA funds that were out there that had to be spent in a very short amount of time. It just created a mass demand on construction companies, and construction costs went sky-high. We did get actual numbers, so we did have something to work with on this chart, and I threw in three projects, so we could see, okay, well, we got a second project coming up in three years, well, then what happens after that project? So on the chart, you can see that all three projects can be funded with our current tough. And a lot of that has to do with the success we're having with the SDCs that we didn't know. We did the initial analysis on the, on street funding. We initially, we're only getting about 20,000 a year in SDC funds for streets, and now we're averaging 120,000 a year. So that's going to really help our budget with these projects in the future, but I am kind of concerned about the success of those construction projects as we're in our moratorium. We do have connections available, and we're earning more connections as we get more sewer projects done. We don't have a moratorium on the east side, so there's some potential for construction of commercial properties to be done over there, but we do need to work on the wastewater issue as well, and just keep monitoring this toughie. And, which we do, we've given a charge every year to look at it, along with water rates and sewer rates, so I think we continue to do that. But it does seem that while we have actual numbers that we can work with, that we will be able to continue at this current tough amount.
I got one. How, how did you project the lid for the three-year and the six-year mark? Because it doubles and then kind of comes back down.
Yes.
In 2028, it doubles, and then about 20% off, 30% off in 21.
So that's based on a percentage of the total construction costs. So in 2028, we have 2.7 million in total construction of 10th Street, and that's a pretty long street, that's going from Oregon all the way to city limits.
Yeah.
And so it's, percentage-wise, it's the same percentage. It's about 5.2% of the total cost. Earlier, when we first started looking at street projects, I think we came in around about 20% for curb gutter sidewalk.
So that's for the entire project, and it's a longer street?
Longer street, so you're going to have a higher number, but it's proportionally the same as we're doing on Second Street.
We'll be able to use a similar approach, honestly, the same exact approach, in my opinion, so, okay. Anybody else?
Just more of a comment, this is great news that we don't have to talk about raising the toughie.
You're going to have to fight me on that, so I was like...
Who's going to wrestle the man over there?
If there's no reason to talk about it, then that's great.
Yeah, this year.
They're like, how can we, we don't want to fight you.
That's what Jim was doing.
Something you should talk about.
Doesn't have to turn there, yeah.
What we do in our committee.
We'll save it for a conversation at a later time.
Yeah, I think the city's making some progress towards the wastewater solution, it's just going to be a long road, and we just want to make sure that we keep pushing, because it's important to get those system development charges from new construction. I know in the, in looking at funding for streets, we're trying to look for outside help, you know, we got the tough, we've got state gas tax, which we all pay into, but what, whom we get from outside that's coming into our town? And I think SDCs for street have been the answer, and will continue as long as we can continue to build.
I agree with the SDCs, I think it's a big thing. It's a big aspect of what we're trying to do, and as a business mind coming in, a developer coming in, if he's going to develop here, there's going to be big profits, or he wouldn't be doing it. So to eat in just a small chunk of that to support the roads and schools and everything else, you know, we got line items for the budget, I think it's a huge deal, and I think, I'm glad we adjusted those, and I'm glad that's an approach we're taking that's less on the citizens and more on the developers going to come in and benefit the community, as they should make a profit. But we're taking a little chunk of it to make sure that the community is being taken care of first. I think it's a great approach, it's a positive approach, and we're going to continue to do so. So, thank you, and I'm glad we did move that direction. Anyone else?
Just maybe, off the top of your head, maybe, on page two, on that last sentence, is that alluding to the fast food restaurant that is coming into town there? Do you have any idea what those SDCs would...
Oh, yes, it's so, like, it would take 25 homes to equate what it takes to build one restaurant, and we won't even call it fast food, but just a restaurant.
Good food quickly.
Yeah.
It's way to spend in custodial engineering.
Any idea what they're, they will be charged for their SDCs?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's in the, it's in the budget, that is, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, but it's...
I thought it was in the 50K mark.
It's, yeah, it's a good chunk of that, 120,000 a year goal that we have with SDCs, so, street SDCs.
Good enough, thank you, thank you, Jim.
Restaurants are a real high road user, so they get...
Yeah, so they pay at a much higher rate than other commercial users.
I recall, I thought it was in the 50s.
I think you're right.
Somewhere around there when we put it in the budget.
They don't even bat an eye at it, they just say, where do I send the check?
Well, the good news is, they can, you know, they can market better or whatever, but they can sell more to make up the difference. You know, we're, some of us can't sell more to necessarily make more of an income, you're stuck at where you're at, so that's why business has a chance to earn more money, and that's why they should pay a little more. Anyone else? No? Thanks, Jim.
All right.
Great work. Way to not make Stacy mad. Word on wastewater compliance progress. Mr. Spencer?
Sure. Again, with the council, a number of council members really haven't been part of this discussion at all, and we're really kind of coming up to some critical points in this discussion with our various stakeholders in this process. But I put together a comprehensive report on the wastewater system and some of the issues that the city's going to have to consider, and just a couple of things, and I want to just quickly run through the report, just so that if you have any questions about any of the sections, you can raise that. But there's some key dates that are moving forward, and time is moving quickly. First of all, the city must submit a pre-draft design report for the recommended wastewater treatment alternative by December 1st of '26. It's about a year process to get to that point, so the, you know, decisions are going to have to be made as far as, you know, whether it's feasible to pursue the alternative that we hope is a feasible alternative, really has to be made in the next, you know, probably four months or so, to determine whether the stakeholders are willing to work together, to work through the various issues that need to be worked through if we're going to consider connecting with the metro wastewater system. And so, that's not a whole lot of time, and there's got to be a fair number of discussions about that issue. The second key date in the, in our NPDES permit is that we have to have a final design for facility improvements done by 12/127, and then construction completed by 2029. And so, again, those are dates that are not very far off, and it's a major, major issue. But if you turn to the report under the background, I just want to run through this real quickly, just to make sure everyone kind of understands the base that we're at. First of all, the city of Crestwell is really unique, because we've got two sewer systems for the city of Crestwell, and everything on the west side of I-5 is a municipal system, everything on the east side is a private system, and both of those systems have some challenges. Again, the challenges we have with our municipal wastewater system is that we aren't meeting and haven't met the requirements for putting our effluent into the body of water, or the crack that the water goes into, and there's some further requirements that are in the NPDES permit that the city's going to have to meet in the next four or five years for ammonia and then for temperature. So, again, we've got compliance issues, we're under... We're under a MAO memorandum, or not memorandum, I'll get to that. I never can remember what the initials stand for.
Mutual Agreement Order.
Thank you. Yep. That's exactly what I was trying to say. The Emerald Valley Wastewater Company also has some limitations. They're, again, they started operating as part of the, part of the, the Melk Course complex. They started serving homes that are, are outside that complex. And then in 2014, the DEQ indicated that, that the resort can't be the provider of wastewater for the properties outside the, the resort. And at that point, it's when I think they spun off the, the private company that provides wastewater services for that part of the, part of the road. One of the requirements they have is they, they have to provide a certain amount of financial assurance so that if, for whatever reason, they went out of business, there's a method to make sure that those homes are going to continue to be served by wastewater. And that's something that, that has not been done. And so as a result, the DEQ doesn't allow any extensions of that sanitary sewer line. They'll allow connections in that system, but they won't allow those lines to be extended to serve potential other areas that could be served by wastewater. And there are other parcels that could be developed if they had wastewater access to them, but they don't. So that's kind of the limitation on the east side of the, of the highway. The NPDES waste discharge permit, again, that has, again, a number of very specific thresholds that, that the city has to meet in order to be legally able to discharge a certain level of pollutants into the, the point source, which is in the unnamed tributary to Canis Oil Creek. And, and so, again, that is a document that says, city, you've got to do certain things in a certain timeframe. And that's really being enforced in part by the mutual agreement and order. See, if I have a script here, get it right, get it right off the dip go. But with the MAO, the MAO is the, the agreement that the city agreed to with the DEQ saying, DEQ then agreed not to fine the city for not meeting the permit requirements up to a certain threshold. In return, the DEQ would prefer that we spend, you know, those funds in, in trying to fix the situation versus paying penalties to the state for not meeting those criteria. So, so that, that MAO is, is really kind of the agreement that the city entered into with the DEQ saying, certain steps will be taken to move forward. The MAO also is the, the document that limits the number of connections until we meet certain standards going forward. And so, for example, initially, we had, if we turn to a page here, initially, we had 15 EDU connections, and then we've taken the first couple steps, which has, have increased five connections and 10 connections for equivalent household connections. So from that standpoint, as we make further improvements, we'll continue to get some additional connections in, in, in addressing the, the infiltration issues that we have with the sanitary sewer system. As, again, those steps go through, they'll be adding additional connections that the city can make. But once we reach that threshold at any of these points, then we are not going to be allowed to add any additional connections to the sanitary sewer system. The draft, the next document was a draft wastewater treatment plan facilities plan update. Again, this, this is something that's, that was required under the NPDES permit. That plan got completed in November of 2024, submitted to the DEQ. A DEQ has reviewed that plan, made some comments, and that plan is still in the process of getting finalized. So the city's on track for that time schedule for the, getting the facilities plan updated. That plan called for four different alternatives. The first alternative is a regional approach, and that total cost for that regional approach was estimated to range between basically $40 million and $43 million. That's the lowest cost approach, and that would, that regional approach would connect the city of Crestwell in with the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission facility in Eugene. And, and so there would be a, again, a wastewater line that would be connected from, from Crestwell to, to Goshen, and then Goshen into Springfield, and then to the wastewater plant in Eugene. And so there's a number of, of issues that have to be dealt with here because there isn't a system in Goshen right now. So, so that's the other issue, is the county has to proceed and, and, and build that system so that there's a connection point for Crestwell. If that doesn't happen, then this option really doesn't become feasible for the city to connect in with that system. So working with the county is going to be really critical for that. The, the second, and I'll go into that regional approach in a little, in a little more detail at the end of the report. Alternative two is, again, a membrane bioreactor. That cost is about 61 million, so again, considerably more than, than the, the regional approach. Plus, the city continues to be on the hook to meet any, any future discharge requirements that may come up with, you know, you hear a lot about PFOS, you hear a lot about microplastics and all these sorts of things. You know, there certainly is, in the next couple decades, there are probably things that are going to be regulated that aren't regulated now. If you're part of a regional system, that becomes the regional systems issue to address. If, if we're still under our own permit, then obviously the city would have to address that permit as time evolves. And then alternative 3A, which was pond treatment with membrane filtration, was about 75 million. That was the highest one. And then there's another alternative, which is cloth disc filtration, which is just under $60 million for that, for that alternative. So those, those were the alternatives that were defined in the draft report to address the city's compliance issues with discharging effluent. The next part of the report called alternative one, regional approach. This is focusing on that first alternative, and I want to just run through this to tell you what the moving parts are in order to make this work. Again, this is a connection that would go through Goshen and then Goshen to Springfield, and then into the, into the regional system, into, to the treatment plant in, in Eugene. Again, this, this is the most cost-effective alternative based on the, the evaluation. It's also the most complex because unlike the other alternatives, which the city has kind of control of that, in this one, we're really dependent on working collectively with the following parties. So city of Springfield is, is key for two reasons. One is they're a member of the wastewater commission, and, and they would have to approve that as one of the, the stakeholders there. In addition, we'd have to get permission to connect in with their system because our wastewater would go through Springfield to get to the metro system collection line, which takes it to the wastewater treatment plant. City of Eugene is a little simpler. All they need to do is approve accepting wastewater from Crestwell through an amendment of the agreement. So, so their issues are, are a little simpler for the city of Eugene. Lane County is by far the most complex entity that the city would have to work closely with. And again, they're one of the owners of the, the Metropolitan Wastewater Plant, along with the city of Springfield and city of Eugene. They are the ones that would have to develop the, the connection and services in the Goshen area as part of this overall project. And they also have a, a number of land use issues that are critical for them to, to, which they've initiated to, to get completed in a timely fashion. County's also considering extending collection services to Short Mountain Landfill for leachate treatment. Again, for us, the, the Goshen sys, if it got as far as the Goshen system, it works for us. The landfill isn't necessary for us to be part of that, part of that system. So if there's a system built to Goshen, then the city will have a point to connect in with, with the, with the sewer line. Again, Lane County received their Goshen wastewater project definition report in February '22, so they've, they've got kind of that preliminary design and feasibility study for doing that. And it's going to be critical that they can move along with that process in a timely fashion in order to, to make a regional approach feasible. The, the next item is the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission. And again, they would have to be in agreement with the accepting sewage from the city of Crestwell, and also, for that matter, from, from Goshen. They were established, again, through, as an authority in 1977, and the, the, the authority members are Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County. Commission provides oversight to the facilities and guidance to staff, establishes the policies and sets, sets goals. So their local representatives from each of the, the members are listed here. Those are kind of the key people that are involved would be involved with communications on, on, both with the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission and likely good connections with the city of Springfield and city of Eugene for going forward with that issue. DEQ, again, is another major party, and, and, and again, they would be a major party regardless of what option we go with. DEQ has indicated in a preliminary way, they're support, very supportive of regional solution for a variety of reasons. And if that solution had legs on it, then this has not been a promise or a commitment. But there, there might be some leniency on timetables to meet this if things are moving forward. But if things aren't moving forward, they're going to want us to pursue one of these other alternatives. And then on the land use restrictions, again, no major issues for the cities. The Lane County Rural Comprehensive Plan needs to be amended. There's a risk of, of a, of a, of appeal going to the, to the land, can't remember the land name, the state regulatory body.
Luba.
Yeah, thank you. I'm of an age on emotive choice, so. But, but anyway, it was Luba. You know, there's, there's an appeal there that could certainly delay decisions going forward as well. And then the metro plan amendment, again, is a shared policy document between Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County, and that's something that has to be amended as well. And that's, that's what the county has initiated, and that, the county commission indicated that in the amendment, Crestwell should be addressed, and that, that was something that happened this December. And so that was the direction to proceed with these amendments, but that's going to be a fairly lengthy period as well. So anyway, the key issues for wastewater, you know, one, one obviously is, is a timeline concern, of trying to work through these various issues with these various entities in a, in a, in a time period that will allow us to proceed with a, a regional solution. The Luba appeal is, is always a potential thing that could sidetrack the issue for some time. And then, then statewide compliance is important with, to, to adequately address with GOAL 11. And GOAL 11 does have exceptions. GOAL 11 basically restricts development outside of, outside of the, the urban areas. And, and so GOAL 11 does have exceptions that would likely apply to a transmission line that others aren't connecting into where it's going through. So if it's just a transmission line to get wastewater from one urban area to another urban area, there appears to be exceptions there, but those can always be appealed. City, again, would need to also acquire either easements or authorization to use various rights of way to get the sewage from, from Crestwell to Goshen. And, and then there'd be connection fees and system development charges, which estimates of that were incorporated in the estimate that we gave you. So anyway, there's been a number of steps that have been taken. The most recent step that was taken was Lane County Commission approving an order initiating the metro plan amendment, incorporating Crestwell as a connection thing for that. The next steps are, my recommendation to the council, and is that, that we pursue a memorandum of understanding among the stakeholders that are going to be critical for making this alternative happen, to make sure everyone's on the same page, saying, yeah, if we can make this happen, we want it to happen. Because if, if any one of those parties says, we aren't in favor of this, then, you know, then we really need to be pursuing a different alternative. And we have a meeting coming up on May 6th with the, with the various stakeholders. That'll include the wastewater authority and the cities and, and others. And, and that's, again, if, if council wants to have someone participate in that, that would be great as well. But that meeting, they're, they're going to basically review the report I put together here and use that as a threshold to make sure we've got all the moving parts identified. And then we're going to raise the question about the potential of, of doing a memorandum of understanding that would initiate this process so that everyone's showing that they would support a regional solution. And of course, that's going to be subject to lots of negotiations and things going on beyond that point, but then it's probably worthwhile to have those discussions as long as we know everyone is willing to consider moving forward with this option. So that's my brief report.
Brief, very brief. What time is the meeting on the 6th?
Um, I think it's at, do you remember Cliff?
1:30.
2 o'clock. 2 o'clock, and it's, it's a virtual meeting.
Oh, okay.
So if you're able to sit in on that, I think that, that would be really helpful, so.
Anybody got any questions? I got one. Mr. Kramer?
So we're only liable from Crestwell to Goshen?
We're, we're solely responsible from here to Goshen. We would have costs involved in upsizing the Goshen line, whatever percentage cost that would be to accommodate the additional wastewater.
Can Goshen's residents stop that right there? Because they're not connecting into that yet.
Correct. Yeah, so there's a number, and, and, you know, they've done a feasibility study, and they've got cost estimates. That's going to be one of the key questions is, for the county, is, is where are you at with that project? And, and so, and I think it's more for the industrial users is what they're really trying to address in that area, so.
So is there an alternative if Goshen residents decide no, that we're just going to move forward against those guys?
The only alternative would be if they can connect the landfill to their, the catch is if they aren't connecting Goshen, there might be additional upsizing costs for us to, to, you know, do that system. But those are all questions that are important questions that, that, you know, need to, need to get addressed if this option's viable for the city of Crestwell.
Good questions. Kind of still half mine. Because from where, from, which where we already have the, the pipe, it's not that far to go to Goshen, but I didn't think about the Goshen citizen stopping. That was a good, good thought. So hopefully, hopefully they don't, because otherwise, that's not ever, not very far, not significant.
No, especially when, because our line runs until Weir Cliff.
I mean, we're almost to Dillard Road, it looks like.
Our line runs to the middle of our irrigation field, which borders Dillard Road.
Yeah, right there, Dillard, that's not very far. So that, that'd be great for us. So maybe we need to send cookies to Goshen people.
So the, the one thing I wanted to get a little consensus on is just their general support for, for going forward with some sort of memorandum of understanding to make sure all the parties are on the same page.
Absolutely.
With this, this alternative.
I have a couple of questions. So they're saying all this is going to end up in Eugene, so is this going to raise the rates that are here currently in Crestwell?
Yeah, the rate could be because the investment between the connection fees and, and, you know, whatever buy-in we have with the plan, that total cost is about 40 million bucks, including those costs. So it's construction costs and, and those costs, and that's estimated to be 40 million dollars. Obviously, once we get an alternative in place, then the, the next effort is going to be seeking any state or federal funding to help assist with, with this project. And, and, and so, but until we know what we're doing, it's, you can't really ask for, you know, for funding, except the one area we have asked for funding is, is for the, to address the infiltration issues that we have with our line, because we've got an identified project there, and we've made a request through our Congresswoman's office for federal funding for that as part of the. for that as part of the current budget discussions going on. Don't know what'll happen with that, but we wanted to make sure we had a request for it, so.
Well, the alternative would be that we paid for it ourselves, and it'd be seventy-something million dollars, and it would double or triple anyways.
Yeah, yeah. And Eugene's big enough.
Yeah, you got a question?
Yeah, I'm sure it's already been considered. I was just wondering, because Cottage Grove's kind of having the same growth pains we are, has there been any consideration to make that our regional map rather than going up north to Eugene, and maybe some kind of partnership with Cottage Grove and alignment and that type of thing?
Ask Cliff to respond to that.
Yeah, there has not been, and I don't think there probably is capacity at Cottage Grove. I know they've had their own sewer issues. I'm in close contact with the Pellic Works Director that works down there, and I know how they have their own capacity issues, so for us to go eight miles down to Cottage Grove to a plant that doesn't have the capacity really isn't in our best interest. It's actually closer to go to Goshen, and Eugene, or MWMC, has lots of capacity.
Yeah, I only ask that because, again, I assume that the Cottage Grove is having the same issues, and so they're going to be faced with a similar dilemma, probably, and if there was, you know, our brothers down the road that we could link arms with for some combined solution for that, would that be more economically feasible? I mean, because this, like you're saying, you have to get agreement all the way up, you're Goshen, Springfield, Eugene, all these parties involved, and it's a little less complicated that direction, isn't it?
I'm going to say no, because it's actually farther as far as the distance for connection, and Cottage Grove has a mechanical plant that puts out a Level Four treatment right now, which is, that's a designation of how clean a wastewater is. And so, I don't think they would be interested, because they've already invested several million in their plant to be able to accommodate their own growth and their treatment, so I don't think they would be interested in joining a facility like MWMC, because they've already put that money into their plan. That's just what I know.
Good question. Thank you. Councilor?
I would just add on to that, that you have to consider, too, that if we are able to connect to the Goshen and, and share the cost with Springfield and Eugene, that's more beneficial to our residents than if we're only sharing with Cottage Grove. And so, at, at the end of the day, in the long term, it could cost us less after the initial shock.
I hope that it would.
Yeah, I would think so, because there'd be a bigger market share you're sharing it with.
All right. Anybody else got any questions? No, yes, Spencer moved forward, MOU, and I'll put, that's the same day as the budget meeting, so, right, May sixth? We have budget meeting that day. Okay, we'll move on to D, Spencer, City Manager, Citizen Interview Panel.
Yeah, basically, we need to pull together a citizen panel, and I listed folks that were involved in the stakeholder interviews as a kind of initial group. I think Mayor Stram has talked to Mayor Smith about potentially serving on, on that committee, and wanted to get some feedback from the council of who you'd like on that, citizens. And there could be other people not on this list, but, you know, again, probably about four people total, and I'd like to have a little longer list in case, you know, folks can't designate, you know, the date on the twelfth to do that, so I've got a fallback person, so.
I like the list. I have no problem with it. I would add former Mayor Stram, if he wants to be involved. I have no problem with that either, if council does. I don't have any other names to add to it right now other than Dave, but if anybody else has any.
I can work down the list then, and, and I'll stop when I get four people, so.
There you go. Is that it?
That's all I've got.
Okay.
For now.
So we're going to move on to the executive session, or no, not take any further action, we're just going to move to executive session. Executive session pursuant ORS 192 dot six eight zero, two, A, and F.
I'm going to go. We're going in the other room, right?
Five minutes, body break. Excellent work, Wendy.
I pushed a red button.
I know. I heard those, you were punching those keys pretty hard.
I think you take them down. We'll just stand here and close the room.
I know, right? I don't know how you guys do it.
I'm not sure I did it well. I mean, you guys could sit back there for two minutes.
Right, right.
And then that way they can close the room.
Would you make a note in the minutes to specifically cite refreshing wording in that, because we have to make sure that that was said about sections under here.
The two, the A, the A, and the F. So you said them out loud.
You did.
Make sure.
I heard.
Get this faded out a little bit.
Put that right in.
Okay. Do you want this, this heading, too?
Nope.
Just this part?
No. The mayor, Assistant Attorney.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to make that.
Sure.
Okay. Here, I'll get that. Okay, thank you. Gosh. Is that a tough book?
Only throw, only use a city book. Don't throw a girl.
Just trying to cost everybody more money.
You must slip out of the way.
They're all so cute. I miss, when I saw her all dressed up for Easter, it's like, oh, I miss when Reagan was tiny.
I know, right? It's definitely.
And they were, they were good to the point where you could dress them the way you wanted them to.
Oh, that's, that's what mom likes.
And then, all of a sudden, it's like, I have opinions. I don't want to wear that.
Oh, she likes her accessories. She's got over her necklace, she's got over her shoes.
Her purse.
Yeah, she's got over her purse, it's all.
I think this is yours.
It's a freebie.
Who's Johnny?
Wrong. Not acceptable.
That's how I like to shuffle cards, too.
Yep. Are you Caitlin's backup?
I am, yes, yes.
Apparently you are. What's your name?
Wendy.
Wendy.
Yes, nice to meet you.
I've probably seen you around a lot.
Yep, I've seen you. I've never met you officially.
Is this the first time you've seen her?
Yeah, I sat in with a couple for her. She needed someone, she's gone to conference.
Oh, yeah, well, you have a backup, to the backup for the backup.
Yes, exactly. Well, and I backed her up when she moved into that role. I took her old job, too. So, I'm just following her, basically, yeah.
Well, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Didn't you get that off?
Just in time.
I'll learn next time.
Awesome, awesome.
Oh, shoot, before they go in.
Hey, Jim, do I need to go lock the door?
I don't know. Before you guys go into your executive session, I've got budgets treated nice, you don't have to double back in the morning.
Oh, great.
Budgets in the Capitol Room. Yeah.
They going to be out there when we're done?
I'll send the digital ones out in the morning to everybody at the budget meeting, but I got paper copies if you want.
Yeah, please.
Yes, yeah, and then close this door.
Okay.[1053.62]
I think this is, if you're saying you have to get agreement all the way up, the ocean's pretty big, all these parties.
I guess I'll make some thoughts.
Okay.
Okay.
We had to come out and see you. That's why you sat in here, you didn't want us to get by you.
You won't be for my man.
Wendy, could you reset the time when adjourned the executive session?
No, I thought it was just this time when we adjourned this.
We have to show the when the executive session adjourned.
Okay.
So just mark that time. You did adjourn it, right?
I did. And now we're back from executive session and now we will adjourn this meeting.